All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin this morning with a flag salute led by Supervisor Gore. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I understand we have some consent items that some folks might want removed. I'll start with the board first. Board members have any consent items they want removed for discussion? Okay, and I've been made aware that there's somebody in the audience that might want some consent items removed. So if you would please, just let us know what the item is, and then we'll get back to the item after we act on the rest of the consent calendar.
Sure. Good morning, Ellie Waller. For the record, I'd like to have a discussion on the reappointment of Mr. Severson to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, so, which one is that?
Twelve L.
Twelve L, thank you. There he is. All right, twelve L, and?
Good morning, Terri Ulller. My name is Pat Davison with the Contractors Association. Would like to pull consent item fifteen, B, C, and D.
I'm sorry, that was B, Bravo Charlie Delta?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anyone else? We can just take the whole consent one at a time if you like. No one else? Okay, do we have a motion on remaining consent items?
Second.
Okay, motion home, second Montgomery. That was Montgomery, right? Now that I have two female voices, I have to clarify.
You know, we can tell you guys apart when you-
Can you? It's the altitude. My ears are not what they should be. So we will go ahead and have a roll call on consent, please.
Yes.
Yep.
Home?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, jumping back to those consent items that were removed for discussion. We'll go ahead and take item fifteen, or excuse me, twelve L. And so Ms. Waller, you wanted to have a conversation about that?
Good morning. Welcome to North Lake Tahoe. Welcome, Ms. Gore. We have lots of things going on here at this end of the county. I'm not sure about the process of the appointment or reappointment. I don't know if there's a public notification of this. There's a Placer County Code seventeen oh six oh point oh four oh Planning Commission, where the clerk is supposed to post vacancies pursuant to government codes fifty-four nine seven four and fifty-four nine seven two, and I'm not sure if we've met that requirement. And I was even considering throwing my name in the hat after yesterday's housing workshop and some of the density issues with furthering our town centers. I don't think I want to do that, but I do want to make sure that we're following the process right. Not saying Mr. Severson isn't the right person to be there. He's been on board with us through many, many, many elections. Not sure if there is anybody else out there that might possibly want to throw their name in the hat. Thank you so much for the consideration and allowing me to bring this forward.
Thank you. And all that county council, if you want to fire up your mic, address the procedure and-
Well, there is a procedure, and whether we followed it or not, I'm actually going to ask the clerk to respond to that.
Okay.
We did follow the procedure. We posted the notice in accordance with the law in December when we post all of the upcoming vacancies for the full year. This was not an unscheduled vacancy. Therefore, we were not required to post a ten day, so it was received correctly.
Okay, thank you. And he's going to show up to fix your mic just when you no longer need it. Wonderful. All right, so do we have? Thank you. That was a motion home, second Wygant to approve item twelve L. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you. And then we have items fifteen, B, C, and D.
All right, again, Pat Davison for the record. Thank you for allowing me to make a short comment on the mitigation fees for the three local fire districts. With Truckee Fire, I received all materials explaining the annual inflationary adjustment well in advance of their November board meeting. All my questions were promptly answered. We have no issues or concerns with the increases as proposed. With North Tahoe Fire and Alpine Springs County Water District, the situation was a little different because the fee studies for both districts went through a revision process. I had drafted a definition of residential land uses during the first round of fee studies. The second versions of both fee studies did not include definitions of residential land uses subject to the fee. The adopted fee studies do not include any definitions of residential use. Over the last three months, we have discovered great discrepancies with many jurisdictions about what is a new dwelling unit and what is a residential addition as it relates to mitigation fees. Some jurisdictions are treating an attached second unit as a residential addition and not a new dwelling unit. Some jurisdictions are charging mitigation fees for detached second units of any size, while many are using a five hundred square foot threshold to impose the fee on attached units. Many jurisdictions do not know how they will treat tiny homes, and the question of junior accessory dwelling units, a unit inside a unit, is equally puzzling. Both North Tahoe Fire and Alpine Springs want to change their fee programs, so any residential addition, which might be an attached second unit, and any detached second unit regardless of size are subject to the fee. Both districts had used a five hundred square foot threshold up to now. We are troubled by that change. We think the change should be preceded by more thorough discussion about consistency and furthering the goals of increasing supply of locals' housing. We asked North Tahoe Fire to discuss these definitions with us now, and I'm happy to say the board at their meeting January sixteenth directed our association to work with North Tahoe Fire staff on this topic. And I'm hopeful we can come to some agreement on definitions and any exemptions. We're not here to stop the proposed fee increase, but simply to make you aware that even after fee increases are adopted, more discussion and implementing work sometimes needs to be done, as you've heard the devil's in the details. That's it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, no questions or comments from board members on that, and we have a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion Montgomery, second Wygant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, thank you very much.
And to clarify, that motion was on fifteen, B, C, and D.
B, C, and D, correct.
All right, now's the time for public comment. This is time when a member of the public can address the board on any item not on the agenda, understanding that the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. Please address the board with your comments. Try to keep your comments limited to, well, three minutes plus or minus, and let us know who you are when you step up, please.
Good morning, Ellie Waller, North Lake Tahoe resident for the record again. Today, I have a lot of items here. We are looking forward to our end of the county getting a little more attention. We need transparency and accountability of those mitigation fees. Staff should provide tables and report regularly at board meetings on the in-lu fees, examples of traffic impact fees, and affordable housing mitigation fees, how those are used. We need tables showing projects that have requested numerous extensions. Just a small staff report what the status of those projects are and the number of entitlements that are tied up. We need a vacation home rental policy. Yesterday, I was happy to hear that the short-term rental policy is being explored. We need to add additional people to the stakeholders, realtors, second homeowners, homeowners and neighborhoods overrun with rentals. We need code enforcement to be more stringent and not just citizen complaint-driven selective enforcement right now. I consider a farce sandwich boards and banners litter Tahoe City while small businesses in Tahoe Vista are being targeted for removal. We need Placer County to look beyond town centers. The area planned by a title means not just town centers. I have lots of backup information for these things that you'll be receiving. As always, I have twenty-plus pages of documentation. We need a recreation master plan update. The shore zone shoreline program has been approved but lacks a recreation plan. We should lead the way on that. We need changes to how we address use changes and the design review compliance enforced, similar to number five. We have issues with things happening in the county up here that aren't going on my favorite, and I will belittle this until the day I die, as Martis Camp Beach Shack was a single-family home converted to a timeshare amenity, did not go through the use change project. We now have a couple buildings in Tahoe City that were painted that didn't go through design review, and one is a use change that didn't have a parking assessment. We need to get county staff to respond to emails and public comment requests like I'm doing right now. I'm not saying you need to get back to me right away. With all due respect, I know you have, staff has busy calendars. Even if you don't have an answer, you could follow up with saying we're looking into it. We need traffic and emergency evacuation and access plans reviewed again, and the county is still moving forward with status quo land use planning and no general plan updates. We need BMP and defensible space requirements enforced. The fire department shouldn't be responsible for that. The county needs to figure out a better way than having realtors at point of sale. We need Placer County staff to do a lot more in respect to just addressing local concerns and not just development here. And we need true public participation. I'll be done in just a second. Yesterday was a prime example. Don't call it a workshop. I'll close by asking agency leaders to take action and fulfill their responsibilities to the constituents and visitors of the Tahoe Basin, along with protecting this outstanding national water resource we call Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good morning. I just want to introduce myself. I'm the new executive director for the Tahoe City Downtown Association. So I just wanted to say hello and good morning to all of you, and I'm excited to work with you in the future.
And your name is?
Kylie Bigelow.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for showing up this morning.
Good morning again. Pat Davison with the Contractors Association. Just wanted to relay some good news as a result of our most recent meeting with your chief building official, Tim Wagner, and your CDR director, Steve Pedretti. The meeting was last Thursday. Good news, number one. We were told that performance reports might be available again, starting with this month's activity. Steve even had a sample for me. Hooray. Glad to see that. These track turnaround times when permits are submitted to the building department, and it's pretty important to our members and the construction industry because we have short building season, regulatory hurdles, and tight workforce. So important that we know how plan check is happening. The last time I got a report, a full report, was in July for the last, or the first six months of last year. So happy to see that and wanted to share that with you. Next piece of good news is Steve was ready for me. He had, at our meeting last Thursday, a spreadsheet with some expense line items related to the operation of the Tahoe office, which is something we've asked for, you know, expense. We know what the revenue is for the Tahoe office. What we didn't have was the expense numbers, so he's given me some of that detail, and I'll be asking him a couple of questions, but great improvement and moving in the right direction. Other good news, we talked about self-certification as a way to streamline inspection process, create an efficiency not currently available. Another piece of good news is, again, having a seasonal full-time person in the Tahoe office for that May to November timeframe. Height of the building season, pretty important. There's an October fifteenth grading deadline, so having somebody that can handle when the peak load comes in is pretty important. This is something that you did last year, and we were grateful for that. We're also expecting an influx of plans towards the end of the year because there will be some major code changes by January first of 2020. So good things were happening, and just wanted to share that with you. That seasonal full-time position is already in your budget, not something yet proposed. I want to close by thanking you for listening and also introduce to you our 2019 president, Peter Greenberger. So he's got a couple of comments for you. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good morning, Peter Greenberger, CAT president. I just wanted to open by saying that, as Pat just mentioned, we've been working very hard over the last year and a half to try to get some progress on the problem of permit plan approval delays. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, conversations, emails, et cetera. And I want to thank Steve and Tim for coming to meet with us and taking the time to engage us in the process and work in a collaborative way. It's very important that we work together. I think that as building professionals, we have a lot to add into the process. We also have familiarity with how this problem has been solved successfully in other jurisdictions. We've had some discussions about that as well. As you know, the process has been very inconsistent and excruciating for property owners, builders, and architects. We've had simple deck projects that have been submitted and taken two and a half months to approve. We've had major addition remodel projects that have sometimes been done in fifteen or eighteen days. Looking at the way in which the department is functioning, we've heard stories about plans sitting on the desk of an employee who is out sick with a major illness or injury and not there for weeks at a time. Plans are sitting there not doing anything. So in the most recent meeting, Tim Wagner, Steve Pedretti, I think both agreed that the appropriate solution to the problem is that we put in place, the county puts in place, a full-time permit processing manager, someone who will monitor where the plans are at each step in the process. So that person will know if the plans are sitting on the desk of someone in planning or engineering or at the fire district or in the health department. There's a number of different jurisdictions that have to participate in this process. We know that collaboration and cooperation is essential for this to work smoothly. It does work in other places. It's challenging. It can be difficult at times. But I would just like to emphasize that there is a real impact on people and our local economy when this is not done correctly. If you have half as many projects approved in a given year, you've got half as many jobs, half as many, half as much revenue flowing into the county coffers in terms of fees collected, but more importantly, the onset of real estate tax assessment increases, which are felt. This is a real number. This is something that could amount to millions of dollars in a given year. So I just would like to ask once again that the board of supervisors carefully consider the request. Steve Pedretti and Tim Wagner are going to ask that the board put this in the budget. Please give it your consideration and fund this project, or fund this position for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen so we can get some progress on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. Samir Tuma, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I'll be brief. As you know, we've been working with staff in your board on revisions to the TOT ordinance, and the last meeting we had with staff several weeks ago was to review the newly created list of what's in and what's out. We had that meeting. It was good. It was robust. There was, you know, a lot of discussion back and forth, and I think most everything was agreed to. There were a couple of things that some people weren't happy with, but that's just the way it goes. You know, you have that in discussions. And at that meeting, we were told that that list would be coming before your board, per your direction previously, wanting to see these lists and when they're revised. Late last week, we received an email from staff saying that, and I quote, "The tax administrator will issue determinations via memo rather than bring the list to the board if the revisions are consistent with existing TOT ordinances, clarifications, or changes made for consistency." That is the case with these revisions, which why I'm issuing the inaugural memo from the tax administrator. In other words, staff has decided that this inaugural list, which hasn't been before the board, doesn't need to come before the board. That's inconsistent with, I believe, your direction, certainly very inconsistent with what they told us at the December meeting. Frankly, I don't have, and from the other folks that I've talked to on our board and others in the community, there's not a lot of consternation about the substance of the issues that are in here. We work those out. We hash those out. But we just want the precedent going forward that when these changes are made, they don't just automatically go into effect. And they've told us that these are now in effect as of January third, and that doesn't seem consistent with the process that you defined, that they defined, and that we agreed with. So we would appreciate some direction to staff on that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keep your eyes on a future agenda. Anyone else? All right, seeing nobody else, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And any board member or county executive reports this morning?
No items.
No? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, we begin this morning with a commendation. I believe I saw Mr. Trebus wander in, sipping his coffee. Mr. Trebus, may we invite you to the podium, please? Front and center with a target on you. It's our pleasure this morning to recognize Ron Trebus for a life of service. And I'm going to read through all of the things that we've got here and then bring this down and give you a chance to offer rebuttal after that. But for now, you have to sit there and take it. So in the matter of commendation, recognizing Ron Trebus for his decades of dedicated service to Eastern Placer County. Ron passionately served and represented the Eastern Placer County community in invaluable ways for nearly forty years through elected office, volunteer positions, and career paths. Ron's enthusiasm for the community led him to play key roles in establishing important initiatives, partnerships, and projects in Eastern Placer County, including increasing the transient occupancy tax for infrastructure projects, the creation of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, bringing sidewalks to Tahoe City, planning and completing new bike trails, and many others too numerous to list. Ron's tireless dedication to the community manifested itself in everything he did, whether it was serving as a director on the Tahoe City Public Utility District for thirty-two years or representing the interests of Eastern Placer County residents on the Placer County Transportation Agency, the Tahoe Transportation District, the Placer County Local Area Formation Commission, the North Tahoe, excuse me, the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, or working as the director of community participation and planning for the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, always making sure funds were recommended to important local projects. And Ron's never better well-known motto is a fitting summary of how Eastern Placer County is today, due in large part to the compassion, support, and leadership of Ron Trebus throughout the past four decades. Now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by this board of supervisors at this meeting held on January twenty-ninth. On behalf of the citizens of Placer County, the board of supervisors acknowledges with great appreciation the exceptional service of Ron Trebus and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. All right, your turn. Have at it.
I got to get back to Davis. Thank you.
Well done.
Yes, this is very much appreciated, but right from the very start, what this represents and all the things you said, Kurt, are supported and were provided by all of these people that are here today. And that's what has been so unique about the North Lake Tahoe area for years and years is that whether it's multiple agencies or individuals, we come together to try to work out how we feel about the North Lake Tahoe area so that we can pass our needs, concerns, recommendations on to you all to help to bring the North Lake Tahoe area to fruition that continues to be better and a better part of the entire county. And consequently, in accepting this, I know you recognize, but I will really say it again, that it is all of this community that does come together, even though, you know, we wrestle at the various places to try to come up with a compromise for what we're doing. But it usually turns out pretty well. And I can only really hope that you continue with the way that you have listened to this community and make sure that both the board of supervisors and the county staff does reach out and listen to what is being said and then be able to make decisions that will be supportive of the North Lake Tahoe area. It's been very enjoyable working with you all. My voice is a little bad, but that was, because Robert had me out way past my bedtime last night. Did you find your way home by that time? And my work on the actual county commissions with Robert, Jim, and you, Kurt, has been very insightful. And again, it led me to believe how this group up here of a whole variety of places that we come from does come together when I was on the other committees that has dealt with issues in other parts of the county and found that while there were specific needs and concerns, I never had the idea that when Bonnie came representing Roseville, that it was all of Roseville that was aware of perhaps what that issue was. And that was a difference that I could see here. And yet, it was important to be at those committee meetings if I did nothing else other than said Eastern Placer County or North Lake Tahoe once during those meetings, just so everybody remembered. Worked with a lot of CEOs, Todd being here, and I'm sorry that our relationship hadn't gone on for very long, but I know that you're going to be a very successful county executive and continue to have a strong presence throughout the whole county. So with that, I am moving on, and part of the reason I'm moving on to the Davis area is to participate with my family. So this is really, my first phase of life was seventeen, eighteen years with the National Park Service traveling all over, including other countries, doing master planning for national parks. And people wondered why I quit that to come up here. But the forty years plus up here was just another phase, and I think that's what we're moving into now. That'll be a little different phase. Plus, I enabled us, our Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, to get a new director that we wouldn't have been able to get, that we've hired Mike Lukin from Yolo County, but part of that deal was I had to go to Yolo County.
You had to go to Yolo County.
So I will be off to that, and again, I appreciate this very much, and I look forward to seeing you all and continuing having, if nothing else, social experiences with all of you and my good friend Beverly Roberts, who's been a key part of my knowledge and being able to get things done within the county. But I thank you, Beverly, very much. But thank you all.
Before you wander off, and before I let my colleagues each have their turn at you, are there any members of the public who might want to say a word or two to Ron's face while he's still here? Before he escapes off to the flatlands? You can just stand over the side and take it.
He knows he won't get too much. Good morning. My name is Jamie Wright, and I am the executive director of the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. I've had, really, it has been a pleasure as well as, personally, I've learned a lot from Ron, but also very professionally. He has been a mentor to me. As a young professional in this region, it's really hard to lose the leaders and hope that we have young ones to come up. And I can say that Ron has helped me tremendously, both personally and professionally. And I am greatly going to miss seeing him and hearing his never better every first Thursday of the month. But Ron, thank you for everything you've done for our community. I don't think we would be where we were today or are today without leaders like you. And I hope many of us can step into your shoes. Thank you.
On the consent calendar today, you all appointed Jamie to the position I had had on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And with her background, which far exceeds mine, it's going to be a great connection between this part of the county and the rest of the county.
Good morning.
Good morning, board of supervisors and staff. I'm Cindy Gustafson, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I've had the pleasure, I guess, of knowing Ron for over thirty-five years and having to deal with his humor many times that were sometimes inappropriate, but most of the time very inappropriate. I deserved it, believe me. But I've known him in so many different capacities, and I was thinking of what I could say this morning that hasn't already been said, both through your great words and your efforts today, but as my history. today, but as my history. I know him as a friend, as a volunteer, working, I think, first on the Tahoe City Advisory Council and forming a group at North Lake Tahoe that would advise the Board of Supervisors. Somehow, I got picked. I'd only lived here a couple of years, but I had to listen to people that had been here a little longer than I had and had a little more wisdom. We had some contentious issues. We fought for a sidewalk that you would never today think that we had to fight a community, and it was tumultuous. And I was young and naive enough to not understand that I was going to have to compromise too, and that this wasn't just, you know, an easy slam dunk. There was one particular letter to the editor that came out pointing fingers at me in particular. And in those days, we had a local weekly paper, and everybody read it. And I took it to heart and was very distraught and was driving to work and thought, what would Ron do? And I knew. And I turned in and went and met the person who'd written the article, stunned him, because I walked in his office and he was, you know, thinking he had just slapped me around. I said, "I really want to understand." And we sat down and came away an hour later with a great understanding. I've become good friends since then and very respectful of each other. And that's the kind of man Ron is. That's how he dealt with every issue in town. So I'm going to try not to get choked up, but he's been a friend, a mentor. I worked for him for twenty-six years at the Tahoe City PUD, always willing to talk through every issue with every constituent, with me. We always made sure to have good service to our community through that process and focus on the customers first, the people who lived here first. And then finally, I got to be his boss for a short period of time. And that was not an easy time, because we were phasing out a position that he had been so very successful at. And when I talk about a gentleman, he took it as a gentleman and went through that process with me, accepted the changes we needed to make together for this community. So, thank you for your legacy here.
All right, seeing nobody else.
I'm glad that.
You again, huh?
We got to meet Cindy Gustafson today. She's an up-and-comer.
Yes. I think she's got a future. Seeing nobody else rising in the public, I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleague, Supervisor Wiegand. Your light was on first.
So Ron, first of all, I want to apologize for last night. If you see my car in town somewhere, do you mind giving me a call, because I got to get back down the hill sometime today. So my predecessor in this job, Alex Vera, didn't unlike me say a lot during the day, but what he did say, I always, excuse me, paid attention to. One of the things he told me was to be sure that you recognize the fact that as a supervisor from down below, you represent the people up here on the east side and get to know the people in the community and get embedded and listen to what they have to say, even if you disagree with them. So early on, I got to know you and Cindy. I knew Larry, of course, Ron McIntyre. But when we completed on the Planning Commission, the Tahoe City Community Plan, I could never expect that we would have seen the kinds of successes that we have seen up here over these last thirty years, not without some bumps along the road, but we sure found our way through it with grand success, I think, far beyond at least my expectation. And you were a critical part of that and a great assistance to help me help you guys and try to stay engaged. And I say that by way of particularly after yesterday's workshop. I think we've got some great days ahead, so hope you stay engaged, even though you're going to be down where I live in the area where there's more oxygen and clearer thinking. I've always appreciated your ever and sense of humor, so keep in touch and thanks again and congratulations.
Thank you, Robert, for your comments. And, you know, I have to point out that I'm the one supervisor who actually came down the hill to come to this meeting. So, you know, there's that. I really wanted to take the time to say thank you to Ron, who I met just about twelve years ago when I was first running for county supervisor, and he was gracious enough to sit down with me and talk about the relationship between the county and the Resort Association and the relationship between the county and the Tahoe City PUD, and give me a lot of insight into kind of the historical context of what I was then not certain I was going to win that race as county supervisor, but gave me a lot of understanding and background for some starting point conversations once I was sworn in. And Ron has been very accessible for the last twelve years. He's been always willing to give me his opinion, which is great. I don't always agree with it, but it's always good to hear it and process that and make it part of any decision-making that I make. And Kirk, I think in the commendation, you said something about he was finishing up his public life. And I'm assuming that down there in Yolo, he's going to get sucked into something, because that is what Ron does. He is someone who steps up where he sees a void and he fills it. And that's a really important thing. And Jamie, what you said about hoping that some younger folks step into these roles, I think Bonnie's the youngest person up here. We all need to be cultivating those younger folks to do exactly the sorts of things that Ron did and that Cindy does and that Jamie does. And you've been an incredible role model for people, and I just hope that you continue to do that, even though we'll be in the wrong county, and that you continue to be a great representative for your family, your community, and your state. So thank you very much for everything you've done. I really appreciate it.
Yes, Ron, I've enjoyed working with you on LAFCO and on the PCTPA. I enjoyed your wise counsel. When I was first elected, I too came up, and there were several people that I needed to talk to, and you were one of them, certainly Ron McIntyre, Cindy Gustafson, and others to get an idea of what's up here. And one of the things that you told me, as well as Ron, that we are the governing body for this area. Excuse me, I'm all choked up too, Ron. I'm sorry. We did enjoy ourselves at a couple of conferences. Fortunately, one was up here at Squaw Creek, I think, and you were able to make it home. I was staying there, but I was really worried about that. But we did have, we did enjoy ourselves and good conversation. You always kept me informed of what was going on here in the area. Sometimes you delivered it through my amazing district director, Beverly Roberts. But it was always a pleasure to see you and your great humor. Well, I enjoyed that as well. So anyhow, we'll stay in touch, and we're going to miss you up here. Congratulations.
Thank you for your years of dedicated service to this community, our Board of Supervisors, but most importantly, the people in this room. So thank you very much and happy trails. All right, we're right on time for our nine-ten timed item. This is a presentation by our fine folks from probation regarding our Placer reentry program. You guys going to share the one microphone over there? Or you want to grab the other one and just make sure that you've got it, the button pushed?
Are we? Yep, we're working now.
All right.
All right, well, good morning, Chairman Ullrich, members of the board. Marshall Hopper, your Chief Probation Officer. I'm here today with Mark Nigel from the Sacramento County Office of Education and also a special guest who is a participant in our Tahoe reentry program. Today, we're going to provide an overview of our reentry program, annual report. As you're well aware, the Placer reentry program was a component and recommendation from the 2013 Criminal Justice Master Plan, which identified a gap in our justice system. And with your board's full commitment and support, we partnered with the Sacramento County Office of Education and developed that program to fill that gap in our justice system. We also worked together and worked diligently to make sure that we maximize services while minimizing expenses and the use of the taxpayer dollar in this program. Since inception, we have continued to expand services and make adjustments as needed. I think it's important, as we look through the data today, that the individuals that are directed towards this program are the medium-to-high-risk individuals that all have great needs in regards to rehabilitation and getting them services. So they are, I guess, in essence, the most difficult probation cases that we have that are filtered through this program. So we're also very proud that we have established and maximized those services with partnerships and now have services from, we have Roseville, Auburn, and now we have a service and program running out of our Tahoe office here at Tahoe Vista. Now, speaking of Tahoe, we've invited a participant here, Amy. Amy, come on up, and is going to tell you a little bit about her experience so far in our new Tahoe program.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I am very grateful to have this opportunity.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to get you off on the wrong foot. I do need your full name for the record, though, please.
Oh, Amy Blackburn.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And I would just like to say that this program, this reentry program, has been a significant stepping stone in my recovery process. I was grateful that I was able to participate in this program. It has given me a different light on probation and looking as they are helping us and they are supporting us, and I really appreciate that so much, because it has really been insurmountable in my recovery process. They have given me tools I need to continue my sobriety. I've learned a lot about myself. You know, I have a job. I've become a productive member of society, and that's what I want to do in this area. We have never had anything like this up here, and I think it's very important that we continue to have this available for us to really grow and learn from. These classes, the instructors are wonderful. Probation has been wonderful. We've been able to lean on them, and it's been so helpful in my process. I hope it continues, you know, and I really just want to encourage everyone that they, you know, that we look at this and continue this process, because it's been very, very helpful for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank probation and thank the board.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Hello.
Oh, can I?
Can you hear me?
Pushing the button.
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
All right. First, it's great to be here. Took a while to get up here to Tahoe, not physically today. I mean, the drive up here was beautiful, but to actually have a reentry program up here, and we're very excited to be here. Amy, thank you for coming here and sharing your testimony.
And I'm sorry for the record, I need your name also.
Sorry. Mark Nigel. I'm the Director of the Adult Reentry Programs for SCOE.
Thank you.
And the first thing I'd like to do is introduce my team. I have Kristy Fee here, who's our manager of prep, if Kristy can show herself.
Thank you.
And we also have Ellie Peron, who's our case manager, who drives up here every Wednesday to provide services. I think the best thing that we could do, we've had over about five hundred and fifty people successfully complete the program, and I think the best annual report we could do would be to have all of them come up here and share how the program has impacted them and how, you know, the decision to have a program here to provide services in a one-stop-shop manner is really making a difference. And I'll hopefully do a good job here in the ten slides that I have of kind of expressing that. In your packet today, you should have two things. One of them is a great day of prep. And, you know, one thing, you know, especially working with the chief, he's all about data and quantifying numbers, and is this program working and is it rigorous? And, you know, he drills at home, but it's very difficult to quantify what it does to a family when you're able to bring back somebody positive back, in a child's life especially. And I want to kind of start with talking about an article that says, "Breaks the Cycle of Incarceration for Children." It says, "Since 1970, the number of Americans in jail or prison has climbed from three hundred and forty thousand to two-point-three million. Five million children, or one in fourteen in the United States, have had a parent in state or federal prison during some type of their childhood." So that's basically two children in every single classroom. It also says, "The National Institute of Justice says that children are six times more likely to follow in their parents' footprints or parents' path to prison." So reducing this kind of intergenerational recidivism would reduce crime and all its associated costs and perhaps break a long cycle of misery and failure. And that's what our reentry program is all about. So why are we doing reentry? We want to create a safe and healthy community. We want to improve family dynamics, and most importantly, really break that cycle of criminality within families. That's really worthwhile work, and that's what I believe that we're doing here throughout Placer County. A little bit about the timeline of how we got started. Back in 2015, we opened the doors and we started programming in South Placer Jail. Shortly after that, probation built a program designed right there, connected to their probation building. And I think that that is a really strong statement of how they wanted this program to be. They wanted it part of probation. They didn't even want to call it a day reporting center, because that had a negative connotation. They wanted it to be a place that Amy described that's there to help and not have the clients leave saying, "I want to thank probation." And that's kind of the direction we're going in. I think that those words show that our program and that effort is working. That partnership is very unique here in Placer County. I have the privilege of running programs in Sacramento and Yolo County, and although those programs are wonderful, the integration that we have here, not only connected to the building, but we share the same exact database that probation has. And I think even that, that might not seem like a big deal, but as opposed to working in two databases and entering in data and all that, that's more time that our individuals can be in front of working together with probation and our clients working together as opposed to doing data entry or other things. So the leverage of the funding and the partnership has been key. Probation right away trained us on their case assessment, which is an assessment that they use to identify risk and need of what the clients need. And our staff has been trained on every single thing that their probation officers are trained, and I think that's why we're getting the results that we're getting. Also, in 2015, probably about four or five months into the program, we developed a relationship with the probation department here, led by the chief and myself, with CDCR, which is the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, serving the parolees in Placer County. And the message, I think, was very clear that if you have needs, we don't care who's supervising you, whether it's probation, whether it's parole, whether you're homeless, whatever you need, we're going to create a one-stop shop and build a program to meet your needs. That also brought in some additional funding, and with that funding, it offset the cost. And we were able to open up in 2017 our reentry program in the Auburn location. And then finally, in 2018, we were able to open the doors up here in Kings Beach. We've also moved our NCCT program to the Gold County Fairgrounds, where they have a facility that is really conducive to the programming that we're doing. We're also bringing clients over there from the jail to go ahead and start the programming, to give them a taste of what this vocational training can be like. And then we've also added evening programming, because at one point, a lot of our clients were doing really well in our program, and then they'd get this thing called the job, which was great. But then they had to make the decision at that time to stop programming and either go with the job, which, you know, most of our clients were approved to do. And this way, we can go ahead and continue clients with their recovery and their reentry goals. So a little bit about our model of how it takes place. This is very collaborative in nature, and so when we receive a referral from probation, usually it's not just a piece of paper and email. Usually, it's the probation officer coming over and talking to our case manager about the client, sharing about what they believe that the client could benefit from. Starts with that referral, goes with an intake and an assessment, and then the case plan is developed together. Because at the end of the day, we can have all the greatest programs in the world, but it's really the relationship between us, the client, the probation officer, the client, and how we work with probation to get the success that we're doing. And then that turns into our service delivery model, and then we're constantly looking at follow-up. Is our program working? Do we need to make adjustments? How is it going for this individual? And then at the end, everything has to be documented so we can quantify the success of our clients. Our menu of services has continued to expand based on client needs. So they might come to us with some court orders or some mandates to be in compliance with the terms and conditions of probation. Might be a fifty-two-week batteras course, a fifty-two-week parenting course. It could be substance abuse, PC 1000. It just depends on what it might be. But our main categories are life skills, education, employment, substance abuse, and then everything is done client-centered, where it's gender-specific, and it's also based on risk level. So we, as the chief mentioned, we do not work with low-risk offenders, but we are working with high-risk and medium-risk offenders, and they each have an individualized program. And that's why our program works, because it's really meant to meet the needs of the clients. And in addition to that, our goal is to create a one-stop shop. Our clients tend to not travel that well, and so trying to get to different areas in the community when you might not have that foundation yet, it can be challenging. So we have shuttle service. We also have bus passes, and we just want the clients to come through the doors with a positive attitude, and then all of these services are provided right there on center. Our program's not easy. It is pretty rigorous. It starts with Phase One, which is a four-day orientation. It is a commitment, and at first, it's not for everybody. A lot of our clients, after a few days, realize that this is work and it's not going to be something that is easy. Phase Two of our program is really the individual case plan, and that can take anywhere from two to five months. It can really take for some of our clients up to a year if they're in a fifty-two-week class. all their goals and they maintain their sobriety, they have natural supports in the community, but at this point, we want to know what prep has worked for you, so now what is going to be the next step? What are we handing you off to, whether that's a community college, vocational training program, or it could be, hopefully, employment? So, the part that I want to highlight is our graduates, and, you know, the way reentry works is, our average client, just to kind of give you an idea, is they're attending our program four days a week, and so they're coming there for anywhere from an hour and a half to three hours a day. We've conducted that needs assessment, they're working through their program and their cognitive courses, they're staying with their court mandates and their terms and conditions of probation or parole, whatever it might be. Their weekly meeting with the case manager, assessing their progress in all of their areas, whether it might be housing, employment, treatment, or whatever it might be, or just getting through our program as well. And then, at the end of it, we go ahead and we reassess them, and our goal is to reduce risk. So what we're doing is we're taking people, we're finding out what are the basic needs that they have, what is the solid foundation, and then we go ahead and start from there and build a solid foundation for each individual that we work with. But also along the way, because our program takes about four or five months, and we're dealing with adults that are busy and taking care of their families as well, a lot of the clients have an opportunity at some point, especially with the economy, to go to work full-time. And so if some of our clients that were on our way to become a graduate have that opportunity to maybe go work for, you know, somebody, and what happens at that point, we go back to our referring agency, we let them know that, hey, here's the situation, what would you like to do? And so a lot of our clients get approved to go ahead and leave, and so that's definitely not a program failure. If that helped them get that next journey in their life, we call that an approved positive transition. And the reason why I want to highlight both of those is because this next slide kind of talks about our enrollment and termination detail. Through these three years, we've had over 1,000 people come and exit the program. Some of them have been in the program for a week or 30 days, and others were over 365 days. And with that, we've had 550 clients become graduates or approved positive transitions, and to have a story similar to Amy's and some of the other clients that you've heard here, or if you have not been to one of our graduations, I would strongly encourage you to come to one of our graduations to hear the stories of the clients at that time. Unfortunately, we do have clients that need a little bit more assistance and that failed the program in the beginning, and they go ahead and, a lot of them are reengaged back in our program as well. But we are over 55%, basically, it's about 53% of our clients have gone through the program with a successful ending at their termination. And so we wanted to find out, so for all the people that did everything that we asked them to do, so we said, "You went through our program, you completed your individual program, is that program working for you?" So out of the 514 clients that we were able to measure, and this is a snapshot in time, and I think everybody wants to look at that word, "recidivism," and this would be, I would not call this recidivism, we'd call this a snapshot in time because a recidivism is a study of three years post-incarceration, and it deals with everybody that was released. So the chief wanted to say, "Is your program working? Tell me everybody who followed the program, and then let's see if it's successful." And out of the 514 people that we were able to measure, as of '12, '05, 2018, only 24 of them convicted a new, were convicted of a new crime. And that's about 4.7%. So, our goal is to get more of our clients to graduate or become an approved positive transition and to work with our partners, probation and parole, or whoever the referring agency, because it shows that our graduates are doing a nice job. And so, some of these people might have been studied for two or three years because they graduated in the very beginning, and other clients in this snapshot might have just graduated a few weeks ago. But we do this annually, we take a snapshot in time, we run all the names through probation, and, you know, we have some limitations that the chief could elaborate on later on of what we can collect because we just don't have this open database to look through the state. But back in Placer County, that's what our data shows us, and we're very proud of that work there. We don't do this work alone, though. Placer County is a very unique county, and it's very collaborative in nature, and that's been the message from the chief and the probation department all the way down. So, all of the agencies that are involved are not listed here, but just a few to highlight are Placer County Probation Department, the sheriff's office, where in their in custody programs, Adult System of Care, come in, and every Wednesday, they do a screening for substance abuse and mental health, Golden Sierra Job Trading Agency, Placer County Office of Education has a new charter that we are able to collect apportionment, and so we've been able to leverage more funding, and so we basically have a full-time GED program where clients are getting their high school diploma at almost no cost, as long as we have enough clients enrolled, and therefore that money could go to other services for our clients, the Gold County Fairgrounds, the Placer County Welcome Center, and the Gathering Inn. Giving back to the community is a huge thing. If you're thinking of projects in the areas that you represent that you would like, whether it's a homeless camp cleanup, if it's a fun run before an event and you need a labor force to set up to clean up or just help out, please let us know, contact the chief, and let us know of any community service project that you would like, and we have a team that goes out and puts together programs. And we've done a lot of cleaning up of homeless camps or cemeteries or baseball fields, just whatever the need is, and we're always looking for projects so our clients have the opportunity to give back. And then at the end, you know, we're always looking to continuously improve, and where we want to improve is, we're always looking to reengage our unsuccessful clients. We believe all of our clients will be successful, just some of them haven't been there yet, and relapse and recovery is all part of this journey that we're on. We want to really strengthen the transition from in custody to out of custody. We're constantly looking at the clients that are sitting, you know, in jail right now and how we can provide services to them with partners over there at the sheriff department. We want to develop a mentor program. The probation department really believes in natural supports in the community. It's one of the first questions that we ask our clients when they come in, "Who do you go to? Who are positive people that when the going gets tough that you can pick up the phone and call?" And we have some clients that do not have any. So developing a mentor program, we believe, would be a very strong enhancement to our program. Along with, there's some amazing programs happening at Sierra College and really trying to get more of our clients, especially our younger probation clients, to see that next step, that they can go to Sierra College, and we're really trying to bring on a program at a Roseville site that the class starts on our campus and then transitions over to the community college campus. And then the last thing is engage community supports and long-term connection. Once our clients leave us, it's hard to follow up on them, and so we're always trying to look at different ways that we can have this aftercare program so we can make sure that the results that we see are systemic and permanent as opposed to just a short-term solution. So, in the packet, what I'd like to highlight here is, at a great day of prep, these are some individual stories of clients just having success. We send out every Friday a story of a client, because we could probably send out 10 of them, of them maintaining their sobriety, obtaining a GED, getting a job, coming back and telling us how well that they're doing, getting through different phases in the program. And so, this is just something that we provided at our graduation, and so, because you hear from some clients, but there's a much bigger story to that. And then, obviously, in the packet is the annual report. And that is my report, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I might make one note real quick, just, you know, people don't have to be on probation or parole to participate in this program because individuals that are having a difficult time, you know, could be one step away from making that poor choice that got them there. I do have a kind of an interesting story, just real quick. We actually have a young man in our Roseville office that came in to get his services, and he needed his GED. Well, during the course of this process, his dad drops him off, well, we find out that his dad needs his GED too, so now we have the son and father both in our program getting their education, which is a pretty cool story, so, questions?
All right. As we're just asked to receive a report, there's no action required by our board, but do any board members have any questions or comments? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mark and Marshall. It's been probably more than 10 years ago, I attended a meeting in Auburn where the parole department had all the parolees that were recently released on parole for a hearing, and there was nonprofits there that provided services. And the parole officer, it was stunning, his first comment was, "I want to let you folks know that," and I don't remember the number, but it was, "More than half of you will be back in prison within the next year." That was stunning. And to see what you guys have done is unbelievable. I've been to your graduations, the positive energy in the room, everybody supportive of each other, they're thankful that they had this opportunity, they're grateful. And actually, I've seen a couple people, one, the man that used to work for me, and I'd forgotten whatever happened to him, and came up, and he wanted to express his thanks about having the opportunity to better his life and finding work skills. So, what you're doing is just unbelievable. It's really a testament to what we need to do more to keep these men and women out of recidivism and back into a solid family life. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you both. A great report, incredible detail, and just some great stories along with it, and I wanted to say congratulations to you for really kind of stepping up and making a decision to take better control of your life, and that's not an easy thing to do, so more power to your girlfriend. I really wanted to say thank you for expanding into Kings Beach and making sure that the project is available up here. We've talked, Marshall, you and I, over the years about the fact that we have a population up here that is fairly geographically isolated, and we needed to figure out a way to get these services up here, and I'm so glad that you took that seriously, both of you, and you as well. I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. But I'm so glad that you took that seriously and that we have been able to expand the services up here because the model that you guys have created is phenomenal, and I think really the rest of the state and the rest of the counties in the state should be looking to Placer to see what they can do about replicating this model because it is working. We have great success, great outcomes. I've been at a few of the graduations and a few of the other events, and it's just so inspiring to talk to people who have made some bad choices in their lives and have really had the opportunity and been given the tools to make different choices. And unless we create those opportunities and give people those tools, they're going to continue to make bad choices. And so, just thank you. The work y'all do is amazing, and keep it up, and anything I think we can do as a board to help, don't be shy, let us know.
Funny you should ask.
Oh, good. He did not pay me to say that.
But we are still in the process of hiring a full-time person up here for Tahoe. We have a position that is posted on Edgewyn at the SCOWE website, and so it's in Tilt Field, so we are actually interviewing another candidate on Friday, but we're looking for the right person. So if you know somebody who would like to do this work, who lives up in this area, we would please encourage them to apply.
Yeah, and I would suggest that you reach out directly to Lindsay Romack, my district director at the back here, and also the local Joy Doyle from the North Tahoe Business Association, and also the Tahoe City Downtown Association. They may be able to connect you into some folks that you wouldn't otherwise get connected to through the SCOWE website.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, Robert?
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I just didn't pile on with those compliments, and I don't want to reiterate what's already been said, but I would just add that, just a great report. Thanks to both of you. I want to point out that the board has doubled its effort and interest in this by adding one more person to our criminal justice program, so Jennifer Montgomery and Kirk Yuler, as you're well aware on that, on the, serving on the committee. But I think, Marshall, you're the third probation, chief probation officer who, in my view, has served in what was an effort to genuinely reinvent probation in Placer County, so huge congratulations to taking us to a higher level. But I think there's a lot left to be done and huge opportunities, so please don't be shy, don't hesitate to tell the whole board where you think there's low-hanging fruit and new opportunities, and I think we're uniquely positioned with our partners, HHS and others, to do some really earth-shaking things, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. The board has received your report. Thank you both very much, gentlemen, for making the trip up here.
Thank you.
We will move on to our 9:25 timed item. This is also, this is an update on our Placer County Sustainability Plan.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. Whenever you're ready, and whenever your slides are ready, whenever all of it's ready.
I actually did not do slides today.
What's that?
No slides today.
Oh, really? Okay.
Just a quick update. Thank you. All right, well, good morning, Supervisor Yuler, members of the board, county council, and county executive office. My name is Angel Green. I am a senior planner with the Planning Services Division, and I'll be presenting on the Placer County Sustainability Plan. I'd like to take this opportunity to provide a quick update on the work program, the progress that we've made over this last year, and then the final steps necessary to complete the sustainability plan. As you know, in June of 2017, your board directed initiation of the Sustainability Plan. This plan will act as a comprehensive roadmap that will outline various programs and policies that will be undertaken by the county as well as the community in order to achieve the most substantial and cost-effective greenhouse gas emission reductions. This plan will also achieve several community benefits and goals, including lowering energy costs, improving traffic, improving air quality and public health, and building resiliency against climate risks. The Sustainability Plan will consist of two main components. The first component is a greenhouse gas reduction strategy, and often this strategy is referred to as a climate action plan. It includes a greenhouse gas emission inventory, which identifies key sources of emissions that occur within the unincorporated areas of the county, including those emissions resulting from county operations and those that result also within our communities. This inventory is used to set the foundation necessary to establish greenhouse gas emission reductions, but it will also be used to measure the effectiveness of these measures over time and the overall progress that we're making as part of the Sustainability Plan. This inventory was completed in January of 2018. The second component to the Sustainability Plan is the adaptation strategy. This component includes a vulnerability assessment, which identifies people, buildings, infrastructure, and critical services that are expected and are being impacted by climate risks. This vulnerability assessment will allow us to identify adaptation strategies and resources necessary to build resiliency against climate risks in Placer County. This vulnerability assessment was completed just recently in November of 2018. So I'd like to cover just some of the key findings from some of these studies. For the greenhouse gas emission inventory, as expected, we learned that the transportation sector is the largest source within our county. This would include your everyday use of vehicles and trucks and cars. The residential energy use was the second-largest sector, and this results from the use of electricity and natural gas that we use to heat and cool our homes, as well as use of lights and appliances. Agriculture is the third-largest sector, and this results from use of equipment, fertilizer, and then also burning operations and activities. For the vulnerability assessment, we had six key findings. Most of the vulnerable people in Placer County are those who have socioeconomic challenges. Those are folks, people in poverty, and persons who are more likely to have behavioral or physical limitations that can impede their ability to respond to emergency conditions. Vulnerable infrastructure systems include various parts of local transportation networks and systems that provide electrical and communication services. Most of the vulnerable buildings and facilities that were identified in this assessment are located in more rural areas where they are more likely to be exposed to harmful events such as wildfires and landslides. The economic drivers most at risk include the agricultural and recreational industries. Placer County's conifer forests, which are already impacted by the bark beetle infestation and wildfires, are among the most vulnerable ecosystems. And then finally, with key services, communication and energy delivery services are the most vulnerable. So the results from both of these technical studies were used by our technical advisory committee and our consulting team in order to develop greenhouse gas reduction measures and adaptation strategies. So the final steps in the process to completing the Sustainability Plan include finalizing both these measures and strategies, completing our both these measures and strategies, completing our forecasts and targets necessary to demonstrate that we're aligning with statewide efforts. And next month, in February, our technical advisory committee will be providing a final review of these efforts. They will report back. They'll also be reviewing the draft sustainability plan itself, and then they'll provide staff and consulting members with their final revisions in preparation for public review. By late spring, we expect to follow up with our second series of workshops and presentations to the municipal advisory committees with a focus on the refined emission reduction measures, the adaptation strategies, as well as review of the implementation program and the sustainability plan itself. Staff will also be conducting study sessions or workshops with our planning commission and your board to seek direction and input. So we do hope to complete that effort by spring. Then we'll be conducting, or with final deliberation, taking into account the public's comments, direction that we perceive from your board, completion of the environmental document, final deliberation we're shooting for summer. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Board members have any questions? I don't see any questions. We have board members.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Gore.
Can you hear me? Yes, you can. Thank you, Angel, for the update. I appreciate it. Okay. I'll sit way back here, and you can still hear me. Can you hear me before I, all right. I have a question for you. Probably 10 years or so ago, I sat on the City of Roseville Sustainability Committee, and I know they're looking probably at your plan as well. One of the questions that came up probably 10 years ago and is still popping, it's had a, is you had mentioned that residential energy is a challenge. One of the concerns I have is that you mentioned some of the vulnerable populations are people with socioeconomic issues, and there's been talk in the past about retrofitting buildings prior to, what, the mid-'80s, buildings that are not energy-efficient, and retromandating that there are retrofits prior to selling, a person selling that property. I have concern about that for a number of reasons because we already have an issue of having affordable housing. And then if you mandate, or if we or a jurisdiction mandates energy retrofits in order for that house to be sold, you're now pricing out people in another manner. So I'm not sure where that issue is coming up as you present your plan, but know that that's a real concern as we address affordable housing, as we talk about what's fair to a property owner. So I just want to share that concern with you.
Great. I'm happy to respond if I may. Thank you. So Supervisor Gore, yes, absolutely, a very important point, looking at measures that would be mandated versus voluntary. And at this time, the technical advisory committee, we've not established any mandated requirements at the point-of-sale, where if someone was to sell their home, they would be required to construct or improve certain components. At this time, we're approaching those types of measures as a voluntary-type component, and we're hoping to identify feasible funding options that then could assist many of these folks that, you know, are low-income or have other challenges that can interfere with their ability to install these necessary upgrades that can help them to reduce their energy consumption. So again, at this time, we're not looking at including any mandatory requirements for the point-of-sale transactions.
All right. Seeing no other comments from board members, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Okay. Our 9:40 timed item is a county executive office item. Ms. Merchant, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jennifer Merchant with the county executive office. I'll wait for my presentation to pop up. There we go. So the item you have before you today is a request to approve an exclusive right to negotiate a developer agreement with Related California for a potential Northlake Tahoe region housing mixed-use project located at 3205 and 3225 Northlake Boulevard, Tahoe City, otherwise sometimes known as the Nahaus Property. It's on Dollar Hill, just east of Tahoe City. There's the project location, and in pink you see the three parcels that comprise 11.4 acres, and that is Highway 28 kind of winding just to the left of the parcels there. So the goals for the project are really to create achievable housing for a range of income levels and lifestyle needs at a site that is in the heart of the Northlake Tahoe community. We're really trying here with this potential project to put a vision to the community's greatest need, which is housing. And importantly, I would like to say thank you to the leadership of the Mountain Housing Council because I don't think we would be in this position as staff making a recommendation like this if it were not for their support and the community support behind this. We're engaged with many public and private partners and really the community at large to help achieve this vision on this site. I show this same slide just about every time because there's always a different group of people, but I think it's important to really, to have your board understand, have the community to understand the kinds of, the challenges that we have here in our community. So if you look at the moderate housing for a family of four, that is a household income level. So those are people, families at 120% of the median family income. And with this median home price in Placer County hovering around $500,000, it means a family of four in this price range falls short of being able to purchase a home by about $100,000. And in Northlake Tahoe, where the current median is closer to $600,000, I think it may even be higher than that right now, it does fluctuate with the seasons, that challenge is even greater. So I'd like to just quickly review the process history and timeline. In July, your board authorized the purchase of the property based on some material terms. We brought forward a purchase and sale agreement to your board on August 28th, which was approved. Then on September 4th, because we've got a short timeline to potentially purchase this property, we issued an RFP, a Request for Proposals, seeking an affordable housing developer for the site. On November 16th, we did interview, a panel of county staff and community members did interview four developer teams, and we then selected the top-ranked developer and notified them in late November and brought to your board on December 4th, a request for authorization to negotiate with that team, who is Related California and the Pacific Companies, as well as Dinsmore Sierra. So the best-qualified proposal was submitted by that group. They have a lot of qualifications in our region that I won't go through in detail. I think it is important to describe, however, that Related California will serve as the principal for developing the development aspect of the project, and that includes everything in planning and outreach leading up to that. The Pacific Companies will serve as the principal for the engineering and construction portion of the project, and they have a lot of experience with that in the Tahoe Basin, as well as in the Truckee area. Some of the projects you see listed at the below there, Freshman Hollow, Henness Flats in Truckee, as well as the Aspens in Southlake Tahoe, and they really specialize in modular development. So we know that it's going to be cost savings and also allow the developers to put in the project in a shorter timeframe. It goes up a lot faster than stick-built development. So the initial project concept is for up to 206 units. This is what was included in the project proposal, and that is, includes 192 apartment units. The breakdown you see here in the size of units, one, two, and three bedrooms, as well as 14 what the developers call affordable-by-design single-family residences. And these ones, as you'll see on the next slide, would have the potential for an accessory dwelling unit in the back to provide additional revenue for the property owners to help offset their mortgage payments. And the affordability levels would be in the range of 30% of average median income to what we're calling achievable, and I'll talk about the definition of that in a minute. I do want to point out that the project concept will not be finalized for quite some time, and a part of the purpose of the exclusive right to negotiate is to give the developer some certainty that we're wanting to work with them in, as they undertake initial planning as well as community outreach. The, based on the 11.4 acres on that site and the initial concept that was proposed by the developer in the Request for Proposal response, would put the project at about 18 units to the acre, so not particularly dense and certainly within the allowable density on that site. You had a presentation a while ago from John Hester, the chief operating officer of TRPA. This is a slide directly out of his presentation to talk about some decisions that TRPA's governing board has made around what is really defining affordable, moderate, and achievable. And I'd like to point out here, the local achievable for multifamily is really for people who are at 140% of the average median income, and then for purchase, single-family units would be 216%. So you're seeing it's a lot higher than the average median income that you would see for very low and low that are within the constraints of the HUD definition, and that really kind of reflects back to the very high cost of housing in this region and knowing that we need to really point at that missing middle in addition to the more traditional affordability levels. So TRPA will provide residential building allocations directly out of their pool for projects that meet these parameters. So they, for a project like this, should it meet all of these definitions, we would not have to utilize Placer County's single-family residential allocations. They'd come out of TRPA's pool. So just an overhead view of the preliminary project concept. You'll see on the, let me try to get my pointer on there, on this upper side here along Village Drive, which is really the main road that leads into the Highlands subdivision, that's where they're proposing to put the single-family residences. So the outward-facing to the community and the neighborhood is very similar to the look that they're seeing in their neighborhood already. And then the other sites here are, I think there are six units to a building, two-story building, so something that's in, you know, really a size and scale and character that fits in with the area. And they are also proposing, but there was, oops, let me see if I can get that, there we go, proposing a water quality feature here, but there was also some conversation with the panel who reviewed the proposals and some interest, I think, in the community of some potential live-work, which would probably mean retail, there is retail, a commercial floor area available on that site, but that will be part of the conversation that we'll be having with the public and with the developer about the final project that they're able to deliver. Some of the onsite amenities proposed, a community facility, stormwater treatment that I just mentioned, a village green for playgrounds, picnic, and other community uses, landscape paths, and an important connection into the existing Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail. Okay, so the purpose of the exclusive rights-to-negotiate agreement is really, in lieu of funding, we are providing the developer with certainty that they can go forward on studies and work product. That's something that's allowed in the agreement, and it's really a transition from where we are today with no agreement and just the direction from your board to negotiate with a party that will ultimately lead into a developer agreement. It would also give them rights to access the property. They would be pursuing certain benchmarks during the term of the agreement, and there is an initial six-month term, but that could be extended to be consistent with the final date that we have currently negotiated with the property owner, which is November 26th of this calendar year. So here are some of the benchmarks that are listed in the agreement. Holding an initial scoping meeting with Placer County to really talk a little bit more about what the project concept may be. In March, reviewing some of the property reports that we have generated during the initial term of the purchase and sale agreement. Having a meeting with stakeholders and community outreach. They're committing to a minimum of three outreach meetings in this first initial term. Redefining the site concept in March through July, as well as looking at off-site infrastructure and roadway improvements that may be needed with a project, and looking at funding sources and amounts of funding needed from a variety of sources. And they will be, at that time, also refining their project schedule and really getting their arms around what it's going to take to put a project together on this site and determining site control and ownership as well. And then in July, we hope to have a developer agreement executed, but that can be extended if we don't get it accomplished, as I said in the previous slide, through late November. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions, have you take public comment, and go for board action.
All right. Supervisor Montgomery has her light on.
Jennifer, thank you for the update, and thank you for the kind of look into the future as well. I just think it's a really good opportunity to bring up in response to Chairman Yular's suggestion yesterday that we move forward to the pilot project around potentially something similar to the deed restriction that Vail came up with. I think these 14 single-family homes are the perfect place to do that pilot project and to put, take a look at putting a deed restriction similar to the one that we've heard from Vail on those. I think it really meets the intention of what the board said that we wanted to do yesterday, and I think it also would be consistent with the interests of the community to keep those local residents who actually live there rather than concern that they might become short-term rentals or anything else.
Mm-hmm. Yes, thank you. And we've discussed those units, as well as all of them, of course, being deed restricted, and there are some opportunities for funding associated with that as well. The Martis Fund has a homebuyer program, assistance program, that is managed by Sierra Business Council, and we've talked already with Martis Fund as well as SBC about the potential for people purchasing those homes to apply for that program and get some assistance on the down payment.
All right. Seeing no other lights at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to members of the public who want to address the board on this item.
Ellie Waller, North Tahoe resident, for the record. Looking forward to this project coming forward to the public in whatever shape, form it's going to in those three minimum meetings. The devil is in the details, like phasing. The project is needed, but the density is just too much. This location is a recipe for disaster with traffic and the local high school being really close by. We need more projects like the one that has been proposed by the Tahoe City Marina that are truly walkable, bikeable. Kings Beach is not going to be the end-all either, which is another 8A item, and we really need to look at spreading out these units throughout the county and not just densify in one location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chris Hennessy. I'm a North Tahoe resident. In fact, I live right here in Kings Beach. I don't have anything prepared. I came to hear the item, but I feel like I should take this opportunity to say that I understand the need for affordable and achievable housing. I've lived in Kings Beach for 25 years. I've seen the domus projects throughout Kings Beach, mostly successful, some issues that we always call the county about, but mostly successful, so good track record. My concern is the location of this proposed project. It's very near the high school. It's very near the cross-country center, which also, in the summer, is hiking and biking trails. So I feel like it's a lot of units, and I'm not necessarily standing up to So I feel like it's a lot of units, and I'm not necessarily standing up to speak against the project. I would just, I wish that Chief Schwartz was still here with North Tahoe Fire. I would like our community to have some pretty intense evacuation education. They have done something recently, within the last year, just to let us know of what services are available. I am not aware, as is my circle of, my sphere of, you know, interactions, of how we get the heck out of here. In talking to Chief Schwartz, I've heard that there's grants that he's working on, and obviously it's something that he and his department are very aware of, but my concern is that now we have the redevelopment happening in Kings Beach in the future, which I'm also supportive of, but I'm going to guess that there will be some requirements for housing that come along with it and the mixed use or, you know, I don't know, I've attended several different workshops, but, so we have that, and now we have this project, which is very much needed. I understand that it's needed, I, you know, I get it, I want to support it, but could we just take a beat? And while all these steps are happening, my request is that you, as our Board of Supervisors, connect with our local emergency agencies and say, okay, let's really prep, like, let's talk about what this means, because at that corner, now we have a proposed 190 units, and it's, we need to prepare, and I'm just wanting to ask that you encourage our local emergency systems to do something more than just information, like, this is how you get out, this is how you do it, this is where you go, and then, you know, I think the community would be more inclined to support it without fear, you know, because we want our neighbors to have an affordable place to live, obviously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
And Mr. Chair, if I might, Chris, great comments, great suggestions. I'm actually working right now with the Town of Truckee and Nevada County to pull together because we are a unified region up here, a comprehensive meeting where we will have these conversations about the different areas, the lake, Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows, Donors Summit, Town of Truckee. How, what is our planning and how do we evacuate, or do we stay in place in some instances? We are looking at probably April for that. I had hoped to have it earlier, but there was some, a little bit of difficulty pulling everybody together between the town and the two counties. So stay focused on this because we'll be having a public meeting about that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, next.
Good afternoon, my name's Norm Kitchen. I'm the President of the Highlands Homeowners Association. We're the neighborhood most affected by this particular development proposal. Initially, the neighborhood is very much behind this proposal. We have the high school in our neighborhood, we have a lot of teachers, paramedics, firemen, county employees who live in our neighborhood. They've struggled to buy houses in our neighborhood. The initial proposal was sold to us or indicated that it would be an achievable mixed housing, that people would be able to buy houses. And in talking with, my son goes to North Tahoe High School, and talking with numerous teachers, I have numerous friends in the fire department, they want to invest in our community, they want to buy a place. They don't want to rent, they already rent, there's plenty of places to rent. Surprisingly, they may not be officially listed, but they're up and down the West Shore, there's little places to rent. What we don't have is purchasable housing for the people who want to invest and live in our community, for the teachers, for the firemen, the people that we're supposed to be supporting. This current development as proposed, there was four or five proposals. The proposal that was chosen by the county was the financially strongest by the largest developer in the country. It was not the best proposal relative to our neighborhood. It doesn't include enough purchasable housing. You're going to put 193 units, that's 500 people renting in our neighborhood. We only have 240 people who live in our neighborhood already. So you want to put 500 people to rent in our neighborhood? The traffic problem, as was described by Chris Hennessy, is already, if you look at the schematic put out by Jennifer, Village, it already backs up every day around the corner, up and up the street to the first street. I don't know how you're going to put that many cars in. You had a meeting with Sean Barclay yesterday. Sean's planning on more than doubling the size of the cross-country center, the amount of traffic they're proposing, they're going to go from a 14 parking space unit to, I don't know, was it 70 or 80 parking spaces? That, the number of car trips is going to be significantly more. The current proposal has nothing for the local merchants. It is a traffic disaster waiting to happen. There are numerous accidents at that intersection. You can talk to Aaron Katz, your own traffic manager, he will tell you that's a problem. The other proposal had roundabouts built in, just the traffic alone is going to be a significant issue. The, there is no way to escape from our neighborhood if there's a fire. The amount of traffic that will run up some of the side streets is scary. So while we would like to see some development happen there, it is completely out of scale with the neighborhood, and it doesn't support what the community needs. I am looking to open up a shop in Truckee. I own automotive shops in the Bay Area. I would like to have some more rentable housing for my employees, but Tile City to Truckee, it's just out of scale. So I would encourage the board to closely look at this proposal, closely look at the funding for the proposal, and maybe have some more outreach to the community and the neighborhood, Jennifer, is exactly what we need, because while it's going to be a positive as it's proposed, it's going to create a lot of strife, and I can't say that as a homeowners association, we would be in favor of the current proposal, but we would like to work with the county to come up with something that's probably a little more balanced and definitely more homeowner influenced as opposed to rental influenced. Thank you very much for listening and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Hold me one sec, Jennifer, go ahead, sir.
My name is Bob Ridden, and I've had a residence over here that's affected by all this now for over 40 years. I built it when I was a pretty young guy as a place to retire, and so this does affect me. I hope I live long enough to see the results of what happens here. If you were a wealthy person and you were looking for a place to build a really nice house, I think that property there would be one of the nicest pieces of property on the face of this earth. Why would you make that low-cost housing? That isn't going to bring the neighborhood up. I haven't prepared for this, but we have a golf course in Tahoe City that I, members of my family are golfers. They go to other golf courses before they go to that one because they feel that the other golf courses are a little bit nicer. I wonder if the golf courts could be used for this 30 residences per acre. Then you wouldn't have to worry about a bus or anything. You could walk down to the local bar and have a couple of horns, huh? Even though I quit drinking, damn it. Okay, so now, you take the fire thing, a bunch of homeowners over there got together last year, and we're trying to figure out a way to get out of there, and they're saying, jump in your car, get out on the highway and get toasted. I'm saying, clean up your yards, cut down the trees with TRPA. Says I can't cut down a dead tree that's so big without a permit, that'll cost me $5,000. I mean, come on, let's get real and clean up our damn yards down there to where there isn't a fire hazard, then we don't have to worry about getting out of here. And if Squaw Valley and Alpine Meadows was to go away, that would pretty much eliminate 3,000 housing units. It's a, their lack of planning created a problem for us, and we're going to try to solve it. You're gonna, some people here said these wealthy people, they've got these big houses up there, they spend one night a week, one night a year up there, it costs them $6,000 a night. Let's pick their pocket. No, make Alpine and Squaw Valley man up. Those people make money. It'd be a drop in the bucket of their yearly income to build housing for their employees. $2,700 in the wintertime, $900 in the summer, the other, my math's not too good, but $1,500. They could rent that out, they could make money on it. I don't think it's our problem, I think business, there are some businesses in Tahoe City that are dinosaurs, and they're trying to keep them alive. Get rid of the dinosaurs, we don't need a lot of, we don't need to go to a hardware store in Tahoe City and subsidize their help out of my taxes to pay $3 for something I can get at Home Depot for a dollar. That's my plea, that you're waiting for me to die so you can use my house to put low-income in there. Why? When I was a kid, I worked my fanny off so I had a place to go when I got old, where this is my nursing home. What a beautiful place. Don't wreck it on me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, Jennifer, quick question. The comment that was made about the ratio of rental units to for-sale units, there's, is there anything that would prohibit the units that are being built as apartments to have some percentage of those be condominiums that are available for sale in a deed restricted fashion as well, so you actually have the ownership interests in a condominium-type project there? Anything that would prohibit us from going down that road or at least exploring that opportunity?
No, nothing at all would prohibit that. In fact, the concept that was proposed in the RFP is not a final concept. It is not going to be what is submitted to Placer County.
Right.
That is the purpose for the meetings with county staff, with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency staff, and then the minimum of three public meetings. So this is the initial proposal, it is not a final proposal. None of the proposals we see, received during the proposal process were final proposals or, you know, anywhere near that. I mean, this is probably a two- or three-year process that we're going to go through to entitle to, you know, the final construction date, I think, was in 2022 as proposed. So we've got a lot of time to make those kinds of decisions. We've got actually the representative from the developer here, Mia Kong, as well as Darren Dinsmore, who is the, the single-family side of the house, and there is plenty of room and time to make those decisions, to get that feedback and make changes. It's going to be based on a lot of different things, including financing, permitting, and community desire.
Okay. I'd be very curious to see what the economics look like if some of that product is condominium individual ownership for sale, because I agree, it means a greater investment by those people in the community.
Yeah, and I think the one thing that a lot of the proposals responded to is the Housing Needs Assessment that was done, and it really demonstrates that we're kind of imbalanced with single-family residences in the community. It's why you've got people sharing beds in a house, because they don't have accommodations that fit their lifestyle. So I think that, you know, we wouldn't want to do all single-family, but I think the condo, which is a multifamily kind of concept, is certainly would, is something that would be considered, for sure.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? All right, seeing none. At this time, we're being asked to approve an exclusive right and negotiated development agreement with related Pacific companies for a potential housing project at the property located at 3205 and 3225 North Lake Boulevard, Tahoe City, and authorized county executive officers as designated to finalize and execute the agreement in form material consistent with the proposed agreement terms, subject to county council risk management concurrence, and to take all necessary actions to implement the terms of the agreement. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion, Montgomery, and I'm going to give the second to Gore on that one. Her voice was a little quieter, but I think she chimed in just before Wygant did, so.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before we actually move off that, just getting back to the larger conversation that we had previewed yesterday around workforce and affordable housing, one of the things that I would like the county to do, I think to Ellie's point about spreading this housing out throughout eastern Placer County, is I would like the county to take a look at a piece of property that we have that I consider to be surplus in Serene Lakes. It's held by the Department of Public Works, sorry, Ken, but I think it's a great opportunity to spread that workforce housing out throughout eastern Placer County to serve all our communities. So just would really love to take another look at that property and put it out there.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our department items, beginning with facilities. We have an opportunity to discuss our Placer County Jail Generator Replacement Project. This is always exciting.
Good morning, Chair Yular and fellow board members, Brad Lulay, Placer County Building Maintenance Superintendent, and I'm here today to request approval of plans and specifications for the Auburn Jail Generator Replacement Project. This project was included in the Department of Public Works and Facilities fiscal year capital plan. A little bit of background, the existing 175 kilowatt generator was originally installed in 1985 when the jail was built. Since then, additional circuits have been put on the unit, which has overloaded its capacity and caused some performance issues. In addition, this unit is well beyond its recommended useful life, as identified by our building assessment through VFA. That assessment gives a generator this size and type about 20 years, so we're well beyond that. On February 6, 2018, the board approved a consultant services agreement to provide design and specifications for, and construction cost estimates for this project. These drawings and specifications are now complete and ready for your approval and bidding on the street. So in order to proceed for this project, it is requested that your board approve the plan specifications, authorize staff to solicit bids, and authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to award the bid and execute the resulting construction contract. The budget would be a not-to-exceed of $652,758. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you, Brad. I'm certainly not going to object to moving this project forward today, but I'm a little bit frustrated that we have been trying to get a generator installed in our Tahoe City facility up here so that we can serve people here in eastern Placer County when we have power outages, which is not uncommon. I note that the last contact I had from Department of Facilities was May 7 of 2018, and I was told at that time that we were going out to talk to people about moving the generator project here forward, and that was the last I heard. So as I say, I'm not going to object to this, but I just think that it's really important that we give equal weight to the concerns that eastern Placer County residents have to be able to provide services to folks here. And we'll be following up on the Tahoe City project after this, because it just can't go into government limbo forever.
So I'd be happy to provide an update on that if you'd like.
That would be great.
Okay. We actually have bid the project, we have a bid, we've approved the bid, we have the contract documents out for signature, which they've returned. We also have the bid documents returned, and we're just waiting for the insurance declarations and the other requirements based on bonding for the project. So we're ready to move forward.
And that's great to hear. The last contact I had from you guys was May, and so it's very important as you move through these processes to keep the supervisors whose districts these projects are in updated, because it's, you know, the communication has to happen, and it hasn't been.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Any members of the public want to speak to this item? What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion by Holmes and a second by Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wygant's 0 for 2. All right, moving on to our public, look at you, just right up there, ready to go. So I won't even introduce the item, I'll let you do that, how's that?
Awesome, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Alice Atherton, I'm a civil engineer in the Department of Public Works in the Road and Bridge Design Group. The action requested is to adopt a resolution awarding construction contract number 000931 to the lowest res- to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Bridgeway Civil Constructors Incorporated, Incorporated of Vacaville, California, for the construction of the bridge rehabilitation project on Bowman Road at Union Pacific Railroad in the amount of $3,561,283.60. Upon county council and risk management concurrence and authorizing the Director of Public Works or designee to execute change orders up to $190,564 as needed. This contract is funded with $3,152,804 of federal highway bridge program funds and $408,480 of federal regional surface transportation program funds. So this project will rehabilitate two existing, two existing bridges on Bowman Road in Auburn. It consists of widening the existing bridges and roadway approaches to current standards and includes bike lines and sidewalks, as well as we're structurally rehabilitating the piers, foundation, girders, and decks. We're anticipating construction to begin this spring. We're going to close Bowman Road as early as early April, and we anticipate it will be closed into late October. We came before your board in September, on the 25th, 2018, to, for board approval to advertise, authorize a solicitation of bids and advertise in which you approved. The Department of Public Works enlisted the assistance of Procurement Services Division and developed bid number 100127. The bid was advertised according to public contract code, and it was posted online on our public work, public purchase website. And then we received five formal bids, but 144 firms accessed the documents. Upon evaluation of the bids, Procurement Services determined that Bridgeway's Civil Constructors Incorporated was the lowest responsive and responsible bid with a total bid of $3,561,283.60, and we did not receive any bid protests. So the bids did come in a little bit over engineers' estimate, so staff, we analyzed the bids and determined that the, the cost was accurate and further represented work. So after discussion with Cal charities, they agreed to fund the total cost of the project. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Board members have any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Alice, thank you. Great update and really good news that this project is moving forward. It is long overdue, as you know. Couple of things that you and I had discussed that I just wanted to circle back on. One is working with the local businesses to make sure that they are as little impacted as possible. How has that work gone?
It's going well. We've reached out all the business owners, and we're currently working with the, on a traffic mitigation plan, impact plan for the school. One of the major people there, the concern is the traffic impact, especially drop off in the mornings. There's staggered pickup in the afternoon, but definitely in the morning. So we have a plan going there. I'm going to speak with their school, the administrators there on the 6th about that, and then we'll be communicating with all the parents with this plan as we move forward. We're also speaking one-on-one with all the business owners in that area. And so if you guys are familiar with Bowman Road, there's a plumbing supply that's at the furthest limit, but moving forward, there's Dawson Oil as well, and.
Machados.
Machados for sure. And they're working with a right-of-way agent to provide access for that traffic plan. The parents already utilize that lot, and so we're just making it official.
Okay. And then in addition to alternate routes for cars, one of the things that you and I had also discussed was that there are actually quite a lot of bike events that come through there and somehow doing some outreach to some of these event organizers around the fact that they're going to have to take a very long and fairly circuitous route, or they need to sort of reevaluate some of these, these bike events. Have we had any opportunities to have those discussions?
We have in the past previously, previously reached out, and right now, your board approved the, the contract for a construction management firm, which has a public outreach component within it, and we are reaching out to the, the biking clubs in the area. We're also posting signs that will be alerting them to upcoming closure of the road, and then they'll need to make alternate arrangements. And then we do have the, the Auburn triathlon that goes through. They are aware that we are closing the road this year, and we're attending the MAC meetings as well. But our public outreach group does intend to contact all of the biking groups in the area, and there are quite a few, and they do utilize that route consistently.
They do. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, seeing no other questions from board members, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? All right, we got a Holmes-Wygant combo there. Robert's on the board for the first time today. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, we have, oh, yes, our county executive office item regarding Mountain Housing Council Federal Housing Policy Platform stuff.
Yes.
That's the formal name for it.
That's stuff. I'm here to talk about some stuff. Jennifer Merchant again with the county executive office. So the purpose of this platform, which has been proposed to all of the 29 Mountain Housing Council members, is to provide a framework for regional engagement on advocacy regarding housing in the region. It really focuses on broad categories, but then allows the opportunity for specific issues and proposed legislation to be advocated for. We have Joel Joyce and I have both reviewed the document and made a determination that we believe that it is in conformance with Placer County's platform, specifically in two areas, in the housing, land use, and transportation section. Number one, housing and homeless assistance, where we would be proposing to advocate for funding, especially for rural regions and for additional housing production. And also, under the county's platform, under housing element reform, to streamline and simplify the housing element production, as well as focus on financing and facilitating production of housing, local control, and transparent and predictable state standards. So we found this proposal by the Mountain Housing Council to be consistent in that, and mostly in that it's a very general proposal. So here are the three objectives of the policy platform. Build political identity and influence outside of the region. Change or remove policy barriers to implementing achievable housing in the region, and removing barriers to attracting funding for achievable local housing projects in the region. So the decision-making process that is proposed by, in the document, is that every year at the beginning of the, the calendar year, a work plan would be developed by the Tiger Team. Tiger Team is a term that is used by the Mountain Housing Council. It really means committee, so, but they call it Tiger Team because it seems more active and aggressive, I suppose. But yeah, Jim, you got it. So that would be reviewed, the annual work plan would be reviewed by the Tiger Team, and then they would be facilitating discussion to try to achieve consensus of all the members who were partnering in that advocacy work. And then any communication on the topics that would be going forward for advocacy would list entities who approve, oppose, and abstain from those issues. So there would be an opportunity, if something were going to be brought forward that Placer County just didn't agree with, that we would be listed as opposed as opposed to approve. Other jurisdiction approvals to date, Tahoe Truckee Unified School District, the Airport District, Tahoe City PUD, the Contractors Association, Sierra Business Council, Mars Fund, or Tahoe Family Resource Center, Mountain Area Preservation. The town of Truckee is scheduled to hear the platform on February 12th, and Nevada County had an informational presentation last week, but has not yet scheduled action. And then the recommended board action is for your board to approve the Mountain Housing Council of Tahoe Truckee State and Federal Housing Policy Platform, which by the way is, was attached to the staff report, so you should have a copy of that document. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions by board members? Supervisor Holmes?
Did you have any members of the Tiger Team here that you wanted to introduce?
Well, actually, Chris Mertens from Sierra Business Council is here, and they will be managing the advocacy platform on behalf of the Mountain Housing Council. But other than that, I am.
Cindy's.
Is Cindy here? I didn't, you're still in the room. Yes, Cindy Gustafson's here. Okay, Shawna. I guess I should have known who was sitting behind me. Thank you for asking, Jim. Anyone else?
Well, good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
So my, my only perhaps observation as opposed to questions is the, some of this is a bit dated. We make reference in objective number one, item three, to regular meetings with Assembly Member Dolly and Senator Gaines, who's now Board of Equalization Member Gaines.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
We make reference in objective three, item two, to supporting two ballot measures that were on the ballot in November last year, so maybe just refreshing the language.
Yeah, I think that was proposed originally last year, and then it had been cleared out. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Thank you. Any members of the public have anything they would like to add? Yes, sir, please. Step on forward.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Chris Mertens from the Sierra Business Council. Jennifer did a great job giving an overview of what this group is working on and what the decision is before you today, but I'll just shed a little bit more light on what the group is going to be doing, in case that's helpful for you. So the Sierra Business Council is coordinating the Tiger Team, the committee that's working on this, and the goal of the advocacy Tiger Team is really, in short, just to bring more resources to the region to build and, and promote achievable local housing. And that's going to be achieved mostly through trying to get state funding, state and federal funding to the, to the area, and by advocating for policies that are, that will help the region build that, that type of housing. This is exciting, I think, because as you heard yesterday, the Mountain Housing Council has been really successful in bringing a bunch of different entities in the region together and focusing them on trying to tackle this housing crisis that we're facing. And the Tiger Team, the advocacy Tiger Team is very similar in that way. It's getting all of these entities kind of on the same page, so that we're working from the same playbook when, when folks are in Sacramento or back in Washington, advocating for, for funding and policies that can help our, our area. So some examples of the types of things we're going to be doing, we're in the middle of organizing an advocacy day in Sacramento, where we're going to take a subset of the Mountain Housing Council down to Sacramento, meeting with, with legislators and state agencies who have an impact on, on housing-related topics. We're going to also coordinate and try to work with the entities that have lobbyists and advocates down in Sacramento to make sure that they understand what our group is working on and what our needs are as a region related to housing, so that the folks who are in Sacramento every day can have a sheet of, of things that they're advocating for. And then, as Jennifer said, we're going to be looking at various pieces of legislation and funding programs and, and taking positions on them, and again, trying to just advocate for, for our region. One thing, last thing I'll note is, this group is not going to be focused on the big controversial housing issues that we'll read about in the newspaper primarily. We're just too small of a region, we're too new of a group to really have an impact on those, on those issues, and those issues can be divisive. So instead, what we're going to be working on is some of the things that we think we can actually have a difference on, which is, you know, advocating for things like definitions and funding programs to make our region, which has kind of unique housing needs, to make sure that we're eligible for those types of programs. Maybe it's looking at, you know, a small component of, of a bill and, and making sure that, that we can, can access that policy or whatever it is that's being, that's being proposed. And so we're looking forward to getting started. We think this is going to be a, housing is going to be a huge priority for this administration and the, and the legislature over the next couple of years. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I don't see any questions. Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? Okay, well, at this time, we're being asked to approve the Mountain Housing Council Tahoe Truckee State and Federal Housing Policy Platform. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
We have a motion, Montgomery, a second, Holmes, and Wygant didn't even bother. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oh, one of my favorite things. Tweaking Mr. Wygant whenever I get a chance. All right, that, that our final department head item, we have to adjourn this Placer County Board of Supervisors in order to convene as the Placer County Successor Agency.
I have the successor agency now. Thank you.
Yes.
Eric Finley with the Department of Facilities Management, and I'm in the Real Estate Services Division, and staff from both Department of Facilities Management and the Department of Public Works are assisting the successor agency with the disposition of former redevelopment agency properties in Kings Beach. So the action requested is the adoption of a resolution to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the Eastern Gateway property to the Kings Beach Center LLC for the purchase price of $1.1 million, and to authorize a successor agency officer to execute the agreement and successor agency officer or designee to execute the agreement, with the understanding that the agreement requires both the successor agency board approval, as well as the consolidated oversight board approval, which would be required also. So it would not be executed until that's received. There are four former redevelopment agency properties in Kings Beach that we are working on disposition of. The large orange property is the Kings Beach Center, which is now county-owned, and we are under contract, the county is, with Kings Beach Center LLC to acquire and develop that property. And that's a large three and a half acre property. The other three properties are, the purple is the Town Center South, the small yellow is the Swissmark property, and then the larger green, the one that we are speaking about today, is the Eastern Gateway property. Eastern Gateway is currently vacant. It was the site of a former gas station, as well as some other lodging and businesses. It is 1.3 acres at the very east end of the Kings Beach Town Center. The county staff is working for the successor agency, and the redevelopment agency before that has been making efforts to dispose of this property per the Long Range Property Management Plan. And in 2016 and 2017, there were substantial efforts to solicit interested, interest from developers for all four properties. And we did release requests for interest in both Eastern Gateway, Town Center South, and Kings Beach Center. We got interested in Kings Beach Center and Town Center South, but we never got interest in the Eastern Gateway property. And to date, not to date, up until September of 2018, we had not had any interest in this property. In September of 2018, we did get a letter of interest from Kings Beach Center LLC to acquire this property. As part of Kings Beach Center being under contract with the county, they are moving forward on their project approval applications, and it is apparent that Kings Beach Center LLC for the Kings Beach Center property will have a workforce employee component, housing component for their project. What exactly is going to be required and the number of units is not exactly known, but it's clear that there needs to be a workforce component. And Kings Beach Center LLC is looking to the Eastern Gateway property, doing a mixed-use project of residential and commercial, where they will be able to satisfy that workforce They're proposing to do 45 individual units, apartment units on the second and third floor with approximately 10,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor. And this is consistent with a previously developed project by the redevelopment agency that they had proposed back as early as 2008, 2009. This would be consistent with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, the Kings Beach Community Vision Plan, and with the Long Range Property Management Plan. So staff brought forward to the successor agency board back in October of 2018, material terms which were approved by your board. We are bringing forth a negotiated agreement with two changes from, from the previously approved material terms that, in that agreement. And the changes, one is very simple. It is a change in the property contingency period from 60 days to 90 days. Just gives them a little more time. Just gives them a little more time to do their due diligence initially when they execute an agreement. The other is a little, little different. We took advantage of a previously scheduled consolidated oversight meeting to take this agreement to that board for approval on January 16th of this year. Four members of the board were available and considered the agreement. To get approval, it required all four members to approve the agreement, and we did not get approval of the agreement as it was proposed. In board discussion, in the consolidated oversight board, excuse me, in the consolidated oversight board discussion, there was concern about the amount of consideration deposit being offered by the buyer and just the length of the consideration as far as when deposits became non-refundable. So that was discussed by the board and given direction to, to look at that again. So we did talk with the buyer, and they are willing to take the initial $25,000 deposit, and that's the second change, and that will become non-refundable after six months rather than one year. But I think the important thing to note is consideration or the investment of the buyer in this project, in the community. And before they close escrow, the buyer, on either Kings Beach Center, that's county-owned, or this redevelopment agency property, they are going to submit applications, do a tremendous amount of work to try to get project approvals before they close escrow. They are invested in this project. They will be invested in the Kings Beach, or Kings Beach Center, as well as Eastern Gateway, with a substantial amount of cost. And this will be prior to closing escrow. If they do not close escrow, any work that they're doing will then become either the property of the county, for the case of the Kings Beach Center, or the successor agency, in the case of the Eastern Gateway property. So they have a substantial investment in this project, and I want that to be noted as consideration. So material terms, it's 1.1 million. The 1.1 million value is consistent with a recent broker opinion of value that we estimated the property in the spring of 2018 at $1 million. They will do an initial deposit of $25,000 and a second deposit at the end of the property contingency period of another 25,000. So the initial deposit will be non-refundable after six months. The second deposit will be non-refundable after a year if they extend the contingency So for their contingency periods, they have now the 90-day property contingency period, and then they have a one-year project approval contingency period to get their commodities lined up and work through the project approval process. They can extend that for one additional year, and that's kind of matching the Kings Beach Center as well. The receipt of project approvals for the Kings Beach Center is a contingency of this agreement. They are, they are acquiring this property and proposing this workforce housing to satisfy the workforce housing requirements for the Kings Beach Center. So the two projects and the contingencies of both are tied together. So the other thing is, they are developing workforce housing. The exact amount that's going to be required for the Kings Beach Center is not known, but it's anticipated that there'll be substantial excess workforce housing developed. And so we understand the need for workforce housing. That workforce housing as a commodity or a unit may have value for others, and whether that be value for a development right that might be managed by the Placer County, or maybe another entity, we don't really know yet. But a contingency in this agreement is that they can, the buyer can develop a agreement where they get some value for the excess workforce housing, and that is a contingency in the Eastern Gateway purchase and sale agreement. So the next steps are, if this is approved by your board today, we then will take the revised agreement back to the consolidated oversight board. And if it is approved by the consolidated oversight board, then we will proceed with successor, successor agency officer or designee to execute the agreement. Then the buyer can then start their, their project contingency periods and due diligence and work towards project approvals. If the project is eventually then closed escrow, the net proceeds will be provided proportionally back to the taxing entities, which is the whole focus of the Long Range Property Management and the disposition of the Eastern Gateway property. And I think any project done in, in the area has a lot of public input, and there'll be plenty of opportunities for public input, is the projects that go through project approvals. There'll be community outreach for both the Kings Beach Center is ongoing, and also for the Eastern Gateway property, but I just, there'll be a lot of opportunity for the public to participate in what is going on in this property and to understand it. And with that, I will take any questions you might have.
Board members having questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify a little bit on the previous vote from the consolidated oversight board. Unfortunately, the freeway was closed that day, and I was not able to actually get to the meeting. We also were in the unfortunate position of having the at-large representative who represents eastern Placer County had stepped down. We had not yet completed our advertisement or our posting of the vacancy. We're in the process of doing that, so my hope is that when we bring this back to the consolidated oversight board, we have a full contingent of members who can really understand more clearly the history of this piece of property and move this forward.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments by board members, any member of the public want to address our board, our agency, I'm sorry, our agency on this?
Hello. Ellie Waller, North Tahoe resident. I want to look at the broader details of some of this, and questions that should be asked by the public and looked at by you. Does the Kings Beach LLC Clark team have prior experience with affordable and achievable housing, which is much needed, as we've talked throughout with the workforce housing councils and everything going on? If they don't, have they identified a partner? And if they do have experience, we should see some of the examples of that. Does the buyer intend to build all 45 units as advertised? The project sounds a lot like the, or one of the original DOMAS projects where commercial was never built. With that said, we may not need that commercial, and both the Town Center project alongside of this need to be looked at concurrently. Also stated is, this may exceed the number of units necessary for this project. I want to make one comment that were, was in my comments on the Tahoe City Lodge. When we're assessing the number of units needed, the FTEs, the full-time equivalents, the Tahoe City Lodge used what is currently at the Hendrickson Building, not what is going to be needed for the hotel and the restaurant. And I think we need to really look at this, so we don't make that same mistake. In the initial planning, of course, I'm glad to hear the public will have opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold one second. We have some, another gentleman. Did you want to?
I'm sorry. I was remiss. I didn't introduce the fact that Craig Clark, the buyer, or representing the buyer team, is here and able to answer any questions. I meant to do that in my notes. I overlooked it. So I apologize, Craig.
Okay.
But he's here to also answer any questions you might have.
All right. Or did you want to make any comments, sir?
I do.
Okay. And your name again, for the record?
Craig Clark, president and owner of CW Clark, Inc. I'm the managing member of Kings Beach LLC. My partner, Mike Kathia, has built and owns 30 hotels. I've, I've developed about 1,500 hotel rooms. I've built 30 shopping centers. I've built five shopkeepers, and Yuma is part of my master development, when I build a hotel in Yuma City Hall and those things. I think between us, we can build just about anything you want to build. So we don't want you to lose any sleep, or we're worried about us getting it built. And as far as our investment, to date, we spent $400,000, and we're one-third of the way through, and we haven't had a lawsuit yet. So when people worry about, your deposit's too tiny, they need to be on the other end of writing those checks. That's the only thing that I wanted to, to offer. We're not going anywhere. We're going to finish the project. Hopefully, this will be my last project. But I will answer any questions you might have.
Have board members any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. Chris Sanacy again. Still living Kings Beach. I, okay, I have two items that I would like to bring to your attention. One is my concern that, as a county, we are selling too many parcels to one party. My thought is that the eastern part of our main drag, which is beautiful now and very user-friendly and completely packed during the summer because of our sidewalks and landscaping and all of that, that that eastern part of our main drag will become a ghost town as businesses, you know, have to vacate buildings. We've already started seeing that. Not the ghost town effect, but that businesses are looking elsewhere and have moved. And so my fear is, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Clark, but my fear is that we sell all of this property to one entity, and then something happens, like happened to Mr. Brown, and then that part of Kings Beach remains empty or still dilapidated instead of redeveloped as we are envisioning will happen. And then the second concern that I have is that when you come from Nevada into Kings Beach, you know, we have the DOMAS Affordable Housing Building on the north side of the highway, and now we're going to have more affordable housing apartments on the south side. And I think, to quote one of my mentors, "We can do better. We should have a more welcoming effect." So I don't know if that's a design review process, when those affordable housing units get built, if they get built, or a scaling process. I just, you know, this is a one-time thing. I mean, once Kings Beach is done, it's going to be done for 50, 60, 70 years. So if we could plan with the vision that we are in a resort town, and that we are busy, and that our sidewalks are full now, and do we want to look at more affordable housing-looking Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the agency on this item? All right. Seeing none, we are being asked to approve the purchase and sale agreement of the Eastern Gateway property, consistent with the terms as outlined in our staff report on page 53. What's the pleasure of the agency?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Montgomery, and the second was?
Holmes.
Holmes. Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify who that was. Sorry. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? All right. We will adjourn as Placer County Successor Agency and reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors in order to address a couple items in closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items of existing litigation, Tate versus County, and High Sierra Rural Alliance versus County.
Thank you.
The board met in closed session to consider two items. On Tate versus County, the board received a report, no action taken. On High Sierra Rural Alliance versus County, the board received a report, no action was taken. This concludes the report out of closed session.
There being no other items left on our agenda for the January 29th meeting, we are adjourned to a regularly scheduled meeting on February 5th.